Good to see each of y'all. Oh my goodness. The warmth that came into my heart as your faces started popping up today was just so great. I am Holly Duncan. I'm going to be moderating this event tonight and we want to welcome you. We're so excited to see your faces. So glad to see you. Okay, I'm choking up. Can you tell? All right, so we have an evening planned and probably going to be about an hour presentation for you tonight, but maybe a little longer. And we want to cover everything. We weren't as concerned about time as much as covering everything that we want to present to you. We have a list of questions that you submitted to us via the survey that we've taken. And so we're anticipating it'll be probably a little longer than an hour. But once again, the content is so important. So that's going to be what the evening's going to look like. And I'll start out, we're going to have presentations by principals and vice principals and different aspects of our family. And then we'll finish, then we'll move into the question portion, the Q and A session. And then Glenn will end with the final statement there. So the chat, as you can see, there's no chat feature enabled. We wanted to focus tonight. And if you do, hopefully we'll answer all of your questions. If you have extra questions that come up as the night goes on, email them to us. Email them. You can email your principals or you can email a general email at info@southlandcs.com. And we will get to those and then we will email you back. Okay? We're not going to leave you hanging for sure, but we just wanted to make sure we were prepared tonight and all on the same page and ready to have an excellent night for you. So let me, without further ado, let me present to you Glenn Duncan, President and CEO of Southlands Christian Schools.
Hello, everybody. It is so good to be here and thank you so much for your time. I can see just very few boxes, so I do see mispacked. So if I freeze on this for some reason, you go like that because I've had a little issue. But let's pray and hope we get through this. I want to share scripture with you tonight. I want to, hopefully we're more in the Word than we've ever been. But our theme scripture for this coming year is found in Psalms, chapter 91, verse 2. But let me read verses 1 and 2. It says this, "Whoever dwells in the shelter of the Most High will rest in the shadow of the Almighty." Then verse 2, and this is our theme, "I will say of the Lord, He is my refuge and my fortress, my God, in Him I will trust." Let me just highlight a couple of things. It says, "I will say." Our words, you've heard me say that's over the 16 years I've led the school many, many times, the power of our words, especially during these very demanding times. But "we will say," and I'll just, "we will say of the Lord, you are our refuge and our fortress, our God, and you will we trust." So use your words because they are powerful. Just when I put together that Joshua 1:8 also says, "My word shall not depart from your mouth, but you shall meditate in them day and night." So God's word, positive words, power-packed, anointed words from the Word of God are powerful things, especially during this time. And it's a time where, and I'm going to pray after this, but it's a time where Proverbs 3:5 and 6 is so important, just trust in the Lord with all your heart. Don't lean on your own understanding. In all your ways acknowledge Him and He will direct your paths. So once again, our theme scripture talks about God is our rock and our fortress and we'll trust in Him. Bow with me in prayer, just commit this time to the Lord, please. Father, thank you. Thank you for these wonderful parents, wonderful teachers, students. Father God, we just proclaimed the blood of Jesus over our meeting. We just exalt the name of Jesus. Father, give us ears to hear. Let your peace reign over this time. Let your peace reign over our families. Lord, when the world is in disarray, when the net of fear is wide, Lord, we just, we choose to put you as our refuge. You are the peace. You are the prince of peace. You're our rock and you're our high tower. We commit this evening to you, these next hour we spend together, Father, we commit it to you. Bless it and bring clarity, I pray. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen. Couple of thoughts, just wrote them down here. First of all, I'm excited to tell you about and to hear others. This is just my small part, but you're going to hear about our plans for excellence in education at Southlands for this coming year. You know, a lot of schools have closed. There's a number of schools, especially, look at the public and private, they're minimizing, they're having a partial program. But at Southlands, we are full steam ahead. We are planning academically second to none. Did somebody went like that? Am I frozen? Am I back? Great. We're full steam ahead at Southlands because, and you know this, we take education very seriously. But as seriously, we take the trust that you instill upon us to educate your children. So we're ready and geared up for it. I'm proud of the team. I'm proud of the team for many reasons, but let me just focus on two. I'm proud of the team because they have prepared to educate this year second to none. They've put a lot of work into it. And I'm also proud of our COVID task force that has put as a priority the safety. Safety is always a priority at Southlands, you know that. But the situation with COVID-19, you're going to hear somehow we're dealing with that. But I'm so proud of the team that is having the education side as well as the COVID-19 task force. And just letting you know something else, we're here for you. We're here for you. We're here for you tonight, but we're here for you all the time. Any questions you might have, if you feel comfortable coming on campus, come on campus. We get answers to your questions by phone, by email, whatever. We are here for you. And let me just finish with this. Let's pray together like we've never prayed this year. Let's focus on God's word this year more than ever. His word is truth. And let's unite as one. Let's really unite as one for the benefit of our students and the children, for the benefit of their future. Now, I don't plan to squeak through this year. We're not just going to squeak through. We're going to roar. We're going to roar ahead by the grace of God. And together, we're going to make this a year to remember for the great things God has done in us and through us. Enjoy the meeting.
Wonderful. Thank you, Glenn. Okay, we are going to start off. I know you've got your questions about how we're handling virus preparation. So we're going to start off with that portion. And Mr. Grant Schmittler has been handling and focusing on that since March, early March, late February, maybe, right, Grant? And so we've made him our Director of Southlands COVID Strategy Task Force. So Grant, go ahead and start off with that, the night talking about these preparations.
All right, so we've set out various communications throughout the summer. And I know a lot, all of you have gotten those about different options. And we wanted to hear from you as parents, what you wanted, what you prioritize. What we got was pretty much half of you want on campus and you want that experience for your kids. And we completely understand that. And the other half of you, again, were a little bit more hesitant. You want to be involved in school, but you're not quite comfortable sending your kids back to campus. And again, we totally understand that. So that's why we made the decision as a school to allow you as parents to make the choice. In order to do that, we have, you know, made purchases of equipment. I've worked with our IT department and they are setting things up in the classrooms for each teacher, for each classroom. That way, the experience you have at home is going to mirror as much as possible the experience you have in the classroom. Again, I had a meeting just this morning again with some of the teachers, just kind of explaining a lot of this, the different training pieces that will be a part of it. But again, we want you as families to be able to choose your options. And then when it comes to reopening on campus, we were fully prepared. And then, as many of you know, Governor Newsom made that public health order. And we are obligated to follow that because it is a public health order. And what that order states is that as of August 3rd, we will know whether we can be on campus or not school-wide. Our county has to be off the watch list for 14 days in order for us to fully reopen. So we're waiting on that. I'm checking that every day. There's a website on the county health that tracks it by county, so we're checking that. But then at the same time, they did give us a, there is an option for a waiver for elementary schools. And we've been calling every day. And yesterday, finally, they had the process, they had something. And so we formally put in that request. So we are pursuing the waiver for elementary school to reopen in person. But right now, it's going through the steps to do that. And once we have answers, we'll be able to give you those updates as well. And we're going to be working on to communicate with you as parents, as families, to make sure that you are informed of what's going on. And then when it comes to our instructional day, we, our goal is whether we're on campus or we're, you know, we have to do distance learning, we are going to, our school days are going to mirror as much as possible what you would experience on campus. So again, we're going to be prioritizing that. So that's kind of the general picture of options for families and just kind of an update on a reopening, what we have can do as a school. And then I'm going to go into the safety procedures we'll be having on campus. So I'll share that right now. So most of you got this, should have gotten this in the email. So I'm going to kind of go over some of these in general, just so that you are aware because you have that attachment. But the goal is to have a symptom-free campus, meaning if anyone has symptoms or fever, we're not going to allow them on campus. This is not just students, it's parents, it's staff, it's anyone. So that's what we're going to be enforcing. We will have temperature checks at every entrance. We already have a process in place to make sure it's quick, there's not going to be lines. We want, you know, we want people to be able to come on campus, but we don't want people to be waiting 15 minutes, 20 minutes and be late to the class. So we want to make sure that it's done in a quick manner. There is a waiver that was sent as well, just so that you guys are aware of that. When it comes to the classroom, I know that right now the big questions are masks. So when it comes to face masks, we are going to ask that students wear face masks when they come on campus, when they have a passing period, which relates more to middle school and high school, and then also when they leave campus. There are going to be times, and then when it comes to in-class, we are going to request that, you know, if they want to remove their mask, they have a face shield. Because we understand that, again, wearing a face mask all day is not good, it's not, it's not healthy. But at the same time, we want that extra layer of protection. So that's how that process is going to work. For elementary classrooms, we are going to be putting up clear barriers on each desk, just as an extra measure. That's something that goes beyond the guidelines and that have been set forth by the CDC and the state. But it's something that we are doing at the school. We invested in that. We are putting in barriers in the offices and we are going to be distancing the students as well. And based on the survey results, we are going to be basically having about half the students we have on campus normally. So when it comes to the social distancing, it's not going to be an issue. Moving forward, we do have a disinfecting plan that's throughout the day. The restrooms get disinfected five times per day. Our classrooms have regular disinfecting schedules. Our middle school and high school will be disinfected every class period. And then we have a high-powered sprayer for sanitation at the end of the day. And that'll be done every day as well. So we're very, we're committed to safety and we're going to be implementing that as well. All right, moving forward, some measures we're also putting in place, restrooms. We are going to be limiting the number of students in restrooms because, you know, especially with some of those restrooms, a lot of the kids like to play and we know kids. So we are going to limit to four and then we're going to have signs up there, we'll have staff. There's going to be decals to show where they stand. And we are, for personal items, we're going to ask everything to be labeled so that students don't share items. We will be having hygiene stations throughout the campus. So at any point in the day, it's within reach for a student to clean their hands and sanitize that. And again, we're, elementary will be eating lunch in the classroom. Middle school and high school will be eating it outside, so they're distant. And then they will be able to have their normal outdoor recess. We are putting in one, we're putting in one-way walkways in the halls. So that way, we don't have the issue with students running into each other, bumping each other. It's one, it's steady flow of traffic. So again, a lot of these are measures that we're putting in just to minimize the spread. I mean, we can have no symptoms, but again, safety is a priority. And there could be a situation where coming day, someone's feeling great and then they come down sick. So we do have a sick area that's outdoors in space, so we don't have to worry about spread. If staff comes down sick at any point in the day, they are going to be leaving immediately. And then if there is a situation where there is a positive case on campus, we do work directly with the county for public health. And we'll do contact tracing in the events that we do have to quarantine a class or a certain number of students. Again, we do have the online option, so students do not lose that instructional time. So again, our, our goal here is to be, is to commit to you that the same level of excellence that you expect in education will happen throughout the year. It's going to be a unique year, it's an unusual year, we all recognize that. But we want to make sure that what you experienced with us will continue. So we are going to be committed to that. And then, so that's kind of an overview of our safety procedures. I mean, there's more detail on the document if you want to go through that, but I'm not going to use up all our time for something that you can read through. If you have any questions, any concerns, you can email me directly and I'll get back to you. I've been in contact with a number of families already, so if that comes up, feel free to let me know. When it comes to elementary and middle school, again, for elementary, we are pursuing that waiver to reopen. Again, the, just yesterday, they allowed people to actually request it. We were told two to three days, we'll have a follow-up from there. So once we know information, we will communicate with you about that. Elementary and middle school, we have a number of different events Mr. G will be talking about. But our goal is, again, is the experience you would have on campus. We want to have that experience whether you're here on campus or at home. And that includes the number of the different clubs, the different groups, bands, you name it. So we're committed to that. So at this time, I'm going to hand it over to our new elementary/middle school vice principal, Mrs. G.
Right. Thank you, Mr. Schmittler, and good evening, everyone. We're so grateful that you took the time to be here with us tonight. I am going to take a moment to just talk about the electives and extracurricular activities that we do offer for elementary and middle school students this coming school year. So something that sets Southlands apart, something that makes us excellent, are those opportunities that your children have through elective classes, through extracurricular activities. So we just want to reassure you that those opportunities are still going to be available to your child this fall, even if we have to start through distance learning, even if you choose a hybrid option, those opportunities will be available to your child. So elective classes will be part of the regular schedule for your students, whether they're online or in class. We're also going to continue to offer our extracurricular activities such as NEHS, NJHS, ASB, Bible reading club, and disciples. So we're looking also right now into ways to safely offer your student band and choir. So we'll have more information about all of the extracurricular activities that we have later, once the school year gets started. And we know that these opportunities are so important to your students and things that they look forward to, things that they work really hard to be a part of. So we're just really excited to be offering them, no matter what the school year looks like at the start. Thank you.
Thank you. You're muted. You're muted. There you go.
Okay, I think I'm unmuted now. Yeah? Okay, so that finishes our elementary and middle school presentation portion. And then we'll have questions, those of you who entered later, we will have questions at the end. And we're seeking to finish around 5 o'clock, 5:15, okay? Just so you know. So now we'd like to move on to our high school portion of the evening. And so we will have our principal, Rosie Pack, speak with you now.
Thank you, Holly, and welcome, everybody. Thank you so much for taking time out of your afternoon to sit with us and just to get an idea of all of the preparations that we have made to ensure the safety of your family when you come to Southlands. And just like Mr. Schmittler and Mrs. G stated, there's a priority in high school to make sure that we continue our programs and our excellence in our classes this upcoming year. I know students around this time get a little saddened because it's about time to start school. But as a staff, this is the most exciting time of the year because we can't wait to see everybody, whether it's going to have to be distance learning or on-campus or a hybrid option. We are very excited for the start of the 2020-2021 school year. You're going to hear about our sports program. You'll hear about our leadership and opportunities for leadership on our campus, as well as counseling from the different high school directors here. But I just want to ensure you that if your student has enrolled already, they should have received a schedule. If we do have to start with distance learning in August, our schedule, our bell schedule will be very similar to that that we have on campus. And I will be sending that out next week, once we have a confirmation of whether we can come on campus or if we have to start with our distance learning. So a bell schedule will be sent to you. But again, it's going to be all excellence. Teachers are going to be ensuring that your students are involved, that they're participating in the classroom. And we're not going to skip a beat when it comes to the excellence that we give at Southlands. So I would like for you to hear a little bit about our leadership and other opportunities on campus from Mrs. Sheriff. So I'm going to turn this portion over to Mrs. Sheriff.
Okay, are we good? Okay, so good afternoon, everybody. So the whole reason why we're here is just to reassure you that we are remaining Southland strong. And so I want to tell you a little bit about leadership. I'm really excited about that because we are going to be able to have leadership programs such as ASB, Junior ASB, Link Crew, as well as NHS, we're offering, we're still going to offer those programs, whether students are going to be online or on-campus. So we've worked that out. So upfront, we know that our meetings are going to have to be Zoom meetings. And my mind is already working in that I'm going to be teaching Zoom etiquette. So we can all, because it seems like that's where the world is going. So as a part of leadership, I will be teaching students how to have the Zoom face and to be interested and, and you know, all of that that goes along with that kind of training because that's what we do at Southlands. I want to say that we will also have our clubs. And this year, we're even stepping it up a notch in that we have our TED Talk club that normally is only offered to high school students. But this year, we have already made up our minds that we want to invite our middle school students to be a part of that. So I'm sure Mr. Grant will be letting you know a little bit more about that in the future. So, and then we were going to have the rest of our clubs. Normally, we have anywhere from 20 to 30 clubs. We're still going to offer that. We are also opening it, opening that up to where students can either have their clubs online or they will have the option of having them on campus. But, you know, but it depends upon whatever it is that their teacher advisor, whatever the club president and the teacher advisor agrees to, that's what they will be doing. So all in all, I'm excited about the next school year. It's going to be different, but it's going, but we're all going to learn a lot. And I'm sure we're going to look back on this and say, "Look what the Lord has done." So I'm excited. I'm excited. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Sheriff. We're very excited to see what kind of clubs we get this coming year. All right, I'd like to introduce our new athletic director. You probably recognize him. He's been on campus for a little while. Mr. Ted Marvel is going to talk to you now about our athletics program.
Hello, everyone. I'm so excited to see all of you. I kind of scrolled through and I saw a lot of familiar faces. I miss seeing you guys on campus and I'm excited for a great year ahead of us. As Mrs. Pack said, my name is Ted Marvel. If you don't know who I am, I'm the new high school athletic director. I was on campus last year as the assistant athletic director. And so I'm just really excited to see what God has for us this year. With that said, I'm also very excited to announce that we, we do have a plan to have sports this year. So that's very exciting. I've always been a firm believer in the importance of athletics. Athletics bring unity, teamwork, goal-setting, learning to win and lose with dignity. And there's a lot of other great lessons that sports brings. So athletics is more important now than ever before. You know, there's, there's a lot of things that kids are going through. And I feel like having sports is going to be a great out for them. So our plan, along with our governing body, which is the CIF Southern Section, is to have sports for our student athletes this year. This plan is going to have safety of our student athletes as a forefront of decisions that we make. So our, again, the safety of our students is the number one priority. CIF has recently announced that there will be two seasons of sport for the 2021 school year, which is fall and spring. So there used to be fall, winter, and spring. They combined a lot of the sports together to create two seasons. So basically, what that looks like is that our fall sports, which will include cheer, girls volleyball, football, and cross-country, is scheduled to take place in basically mid-December through April, depending on how we do in playoffs. So it can go all the way through April. And then our spring sports, which will include boys and girls basketball, girls soccer, baseball, softball, and boys and girls track and field. That'll take place mid-March to the end of June, again, pending CIF playoff, playoff first. So our target date to which we would like to begin our in-person workouts is November 2nd. Again, that's subject to change based on the status of our state and local government requirements. But through all this, we are fully trusting God. I was reading, it was, it was a great timing in my devotion just this morning, I was reading. And it talked about not clinging, not clinging to fear. It went on to say that, not to, "Don't withhold any fears from God. As God reveals our fears, He will also build our faith." And so that was such a great timing for what we're talking about today. So again, we're excited for this year and can't wait to see God work through this. We know that He will. We trust Him. So please feel free to email me if you have any specific questions about sports. We are going to come up with a more detailed calendar that will outline each individual sport as to when their official start dates will begin. And again, we'll keep you up to date through our athletic website, southlandathletics.com. And that's where we're going to post all of our updates on what's happening with sports. So thank you for your time. I appreciate you guys. I love seeing you guys. And I can't wait to, yeah, for this year. It's going to be awesome.
Thank you, Coach. Thank you. And now I'd like to turn this next portion over to our Assistant Principal of Counseling, Mrs. Garcia. She is in charge of counseling, guidance counseling, college counseling. And I just want to, before she comes on, if your student in high school has a dream about a particular career or college/university that they want to go to, Mrs. Garcia works diligently on getting your students to the school of their choice. So Mrs. Garcia, I will turn it over to you.
Good evening. I'm glad to see everyone. We miss everyone. And I just want to talk a little bit about the counseling services that we have. And so all our students, you know, when they come in, we advise them not only on their classes, but also preparing them for careers and colleges. But during this time of COVID, I want to really reassure the parents that the other side that we also have is very important, which is the social, emotional counseling. We know that even though our kids are strong, sometimes, I have three kids myself and they might not show, tell me everything they're thinking or they want to seem strong for me. And they want to sometimes, you know, not worry mom and dad. And so that's why, as a school, we have counseling services. I'm there to talk with them. If you notice that your student is a little bit withdrawn or having a hard time, you know, for different reasons, or sometimes it could be someone we know that's been sick with COVID or just, you know, being in the house so long and they're maybe not responding the way you, you, you think they would normally respond to something, please reach out, especially during these times. It's really important for you to know that I'm here to help with that. My degree is in psychology, also in education. But if there's a situation where I would feel that a student needs further counseling, I do have outside sources, Christian counselors as well, that we can refer families to. And so we're here as a family to help each other. You know, in prayer, we know that God can do all things, but sometimes kids need someone to listen to them where they can just let kids need someone to listen to them, where they can just let things out of frustration. I'm so proud of our staff. On, I want to share something with you that at the end of the last semester, when we transitioned to Zoom, our teachers were so quick to email me if they noticed somebody, you know, missed a class or two, or they weren't their usual self on the screen. You know, I mean, teachers are teaching, but they're like monitoring, you know, expressions. You know, they would tell me, you know, Johnny didn't participate as much as he usually does. You know, please check in on with him. And so then I'd do a Zoom with the student or with the parent. And so we're here to support you, not just academically, but during this time, to have social emotional support. And we're here for you. Thank you so much.
Wonderful.
Great. Thank you, high school. Thank you. Okay, we are doing great on our timing. My goodness, I'm so excited to look at the clock and see how we're doing. So we are going to move into our question portion. So I'm going to read the questions. These are the questions that were submitted via survey, and I've grouped them according to topic. And so then various people, whoever has in our staff has the answer for that part, will unmute themselves and answer. So, okay, the beginning questions are all about handling the virus. So Mr. Schmider, get ready. If the number of COVID-19 cases is still increasing, as it is lately, how likely will SCS resume to on-campus learning?
I mean, right now, we're, we're committed to be on, on campus as soon as possible. But again, we're subject to the state guidelines when it comes to the county public health. And elementary, we're pursuing that waiver. We want to be on campus. We want to be in person, at least, and at least offer that to our families. But by August 3, we'll know for, we'll know for sure about middle school and high school, if it can be on campus, or will be distant. But again, that, that's the update on that.
Okay. And I know we've already covered this in the talking portion, the present, Mr. Schmider was at the very beginning, and we had people who came in late. And then these are the questions, and so we really just want to emphasize those. Okay, so our face coverings required on campus?
Yes, they're going to be required, like I said, when we come on camp, when, when anyone comes on campus, in between passing periods, you know, specifically middle school and high school. And then when they leave, when students leave campus, because that's the time when most students are out and about, you know, we, we want people to be distant, but again, kids are kids, and things happen, and also for adults as well. But in class, we are encouraging those, you know, to wear a face shield. It provides, you know, a similar level of protection, but again, it doesn't affect breathing, the health, you know, some students may have health issues. But again, face shields are preferred in class, and our teachers will be wearing face shields as well.
Wonderful. Okay, do I get to choose the days my child would be in school?
Yeah, so myself and then Mrs. Pax, for the high school students, will be working with each family who selected the hybrid option. I think I actually got an email about that during our town hall right now. And so we'll be working with each family to help to work out the days, works out a schedule for the family. But as well, we want the schedule to be able to spread the students out as much as possible. But again, we want to make sure it works for the family as well. So yes, you will be able to schedule that, but it will be working with the principals.
Okay. What about book materials?
Yeah, all, all book materials will be provided. I mean, high school purchases their books, but for elementary and middle school, we will have a curriculum pickup for families. And as well for those in the hybrid or distance learning, we will be having materials sent home on a regular, on a regular basis, so that it's not, again, the students have everything that they need. So again, it's not just going to be figuring out what, what they have at home, but it is going to be actual curriculum provided to them.
Okay. Can you tell me how many students per classroom?
It honestly depends on the, the class level, the class size. But right now, based on the survey, we're expecting school-wide, about 40 to 50% of our normal students on campus, when we can reopen on campus. So with that, you can pretty much cut every class in half. And then I know high school has something, and so Mrs. Pax can speak about into what high school is doing as well.
Yes. So many of our classes, we were able to reduce the size by adding sections to the larger populated classes. And then in other classes where we were not able to add a section, the teacher may have been in one of the smaller classrooms, in one of the bungalows in the back. And so we have moved them to the brick buildings. So if needed, depending on how many students choose on campus or hybrid, we can freely move the classes, if needed, from a smaller classroom to a large one to accommodate. But for the majority of the classes, we are able to reduce the size by almost half as well.
That's great. Okay, will events be happening this year?
Yes, events will be happening. A lot of them, you know, will, that we talked about with this, the extracurriculars will be taking place. Some of the events may be happening, happening virtually. We did have, for example, you know, when we had our high school graduation, or we had our eighth grade promotion, we had an event. It was just in a different format. But again, our goal is to provide as much of a, a normal experience, given the circumstances.
What about class trips?
So when it comes to class trips, overnight trips for the school year have been canceled. There's just too much uncertainty, and you know, families paying money for that. With that uncertainty and deposits, it wasn't reasonable. The field trips for the fall have all been canceled. And then for spring field trips, if we're just taking a wait-and-see approach on those.
Will holidays remain the same?
Yes, holidays will remain the same. We'll have our normal school schedule when it comes to holidays.
Okay. Are there any deviations from the American Academy of Pediatrics guidelines?
So what we've done is we've taken the AAP guidelines, the CDC, the state, and we've kind, we've used all those to kind of guide our reopening. And in most cases, we've actually exceeded all those guidelines. For example, I know one says six feet, one says three to six feet distancing in class. So we'll definitely accomplish that. But as well, in addition, especially in our elementary classrooms, where, you know, we have students who may not be as, just to say, they're just not as trained to cover their mouths if they sneeze or, you know, it's just the reality of it. We do have those physical barriers on their desk as well. Yeah, we definitely meet those guidelines.
Okay. Will students, well, this actually says kids. Will kids have to wear masks the entire day at school, including PE?
So no. So like I explained, masks will be worn at specific times, and then we are going to have request facials in the classroom. When it comes to recess and PE, the guidelines currently do not include face coverings, and that's for health and safety. If kids are running around with a mask, it impairs their breathing. If students have a face shield on, you know, they, something can get hit, and it could, it could hurt them. We are going to be encouraging distancing. Obviously, our P, you know, PE will look different. Recession will be looking different. And if we do have instances where students, you know, aren't following what is, what we expect of them, we are going to put in processes so that way they either sit out, or they do have, you know, have to wear something. But again, when it comes to recess and PE, we are going to be following those guidelines on that.
Great. Okay, what will the schedule be like at school versus a Zoom class? Is it full day, half day? How long?
It is going to be full day, but again, it's going to be some minor, minor variations to that, given just the different settings. But again, we want to mirror what happens in the class as much if it's online. And there could be situations where, you know, we're, we're going in person, and then there may have to be a day or two we go online, given the circumstances. We want something to be consistency, and that's kind of what we're striving for on that. So when it comes to a specific online schedule, if, if we do have to do distance learning, or if, for example, elementary, we do get a waiver, the elementary teachers will provide a schedule for the families, and then middle school and high school will have their bell schedule.
Have you mentioned about the cameras and being installed, and how the Zoom will look different than it did?
Well, I mentioned some of the equipment. So what we do have for elementary classrooms, we actually have a robotic camera called Swivel in place, where in elementary classrooms, teachers are a lot more, they have to be moving around just the age group. So we do have cameras in place. So for every teacher, for every device, we had to look at by device, you know, what they have, what they need to make it work for a camera. Our IT department's been great on that. They, we've gotten the cameras, you know, we have different scenarios, different setups, so that the Zoom that you experience in the spring is not going to be the same Zoom that you experience in the fall. We're, we're not just settling, we're going to be taking it to the next level. And so whether that's distance learning, whether that's, you know, mixture of in-person, online, we do want to step up that bar.
Wonderful. During the school year, if we'd like to change our learning option from online to onsite or vice versa, is that possible?
Yeah, so we are going to be, again, we're working with the families on that. So that way, we do have a roster for the teachers, so they know exactly what students are at home and what students are on campus. And then we are going to have a process in place again, and we do request at least a week's advance notice to a change, because there is a, we do have to make some changes. We do have to communicate to the teachers. There has to be prep work involved. Yeah, whatever they select at the beginning of the year, when we are on campus, they're not second. So we do have the ability to change that.
Okay. Now, if the student gets sick during the day, how do you handle that?
If a student gets sick during the day, like I said, we do have an area that's outside, away from everyone. We do have the proper PPE for our staff to, to, I won't say treat, but again, to, to work with that student. And so the parent will be notified to come pick up their student. If they do present COVID symptoms, we are going to request, you know, we do request that they follow through on that process. And there is, if you look on the safety procedures that were sent out, there is a process to return to school. But again, if you are home, you can still participate online, and subject to how anyone's doing. And, you know, we do have a plan in place if there are positive COVID cases on, on campus. So I mean, that is a reality that we have to be prepared for. So it may require a class to quarantine for a certain time period. But again, that's why we talked about consistency with schedule, where what we're doing in, on campus and then online, we want it to mirror. So we do have those plans in place. Yeah. And the same thing applies to staff. If the staff is sick, they, they have to leave, and there'll probably be times where myself or Mrs. G will be in the classroom to, until a substitute teacher can arrive.
Okay, wonderful. Um, this is related to, I think you answered that in saying all that. Okay. So this is our elementary specific, I believe. I have a younger student for, in, I have younger students for distance learning. How is SCS prepared to teach these students?
So I have kids in that same exact position, so I know exactly what you mean. But we, again, our goal is to get the waiver and be on campus. We want to be able to offer that to our families. For those who are not, for what, they're participating via distance learning, you know, our teachers know age-appropriate activities. It's not going to be them staring at the screen, working for hours on end. There is, there is activity involved, you know, get them moving around, get out that energy. And in this, in the scenario where our waiver is denied, we are pursuing all options, including the possibility of our TK and K class still possibly being on campus. We're working through that process if all else fails. But we, we, like I said, we, we understand child development, and we are going to be adjusting accordingly.
Okay. Um, will you have a person to remind the children to always wash their hands after recess and meals?
Yeah, so we have our counselors, and then we also have our, our teachers and staff. And it's going to, like I said, you're going to see these stations set up throughout the campus, and it's going to become a normal process where, you know, clean your hands, clean your hands, clean your hands. And it's going to be reinforced. It's all about, you know, education. You know, we don't want to, we don't, we don't want to instill fear. But again, there is, you know, growing up, it's always, you know, always wash your hands before you eat, always wash your hands. You know, it's, it's just hygiene, and we want to be reinforcing that.
And Mrs. Pax, that goes for high school too, right?
Absolutely. We will be reminding the students to wash their hands.
Yeah.
Add some, add some deodorant in that for the high school.
Absolutely.
Okay, how much parent participation during the class time is expected this year, especially for younger grades? Wait, we just answered that, basically, when you answered the previous question, right?
Yeah, I mean, I mean, the goal is as minimal parent involvement as possible. Every child is different. But you know, if, if we have a five-year-old who is running around and not coming back, and, and they're doing online, we are, you know, the parent may need to help out. But again, that's where the communication piece between teacher and parent that we, you know, we always strive for will come into play.
Wonderful.
Yeah.
How are the children being assessed?
So we're, we're going to be, it's going to be, it's going to be a variety of methods. Again, teachers will have materials prepared. There will be some digital assessments. We have assessments in place. I know for high school, they did a lot of digital assessments as well. So the same types of assessments they've been doing, but in the digital format. So that way, our teachers do have an accurate read on the student.
Did you want to add to that, Rosie?
No, I just wanted to say the same thing. Yeah, we do have digital formats, but we also use other assessment means. There, it's a formative assessment, and so it may not necessarily be a paper and pencil test, but it's just different ways that teachers are able to determine whether a student is progressing through the material.
And how will we implement social distancing, especially among the younger children during playtime?
So when it comes to restrooms, we'll have signs, we'll have markers, we'll be limiting that. When it comes to playtime, again, it's just about education, reinforcement, and, and follow-through on that. Kids, kids are going to be kids, but at the same time, we, we're going to, we're going to strive to making sure that it is reinforced. Again, it's not about putting fear in kids, but it's about this understanding and, and teaching responsibility on that end. And again, when it comes to recess was brought up, when it comes to playground equipment, it is all going to be wiped down after every recess. So that way, everything is safe.
Okay. Chapel, will chapel have singing? Can I answer this, Grant?
Absolutely.
I'm still chapel director and teaching that. It's near and dear to my heart for elementary and middle school. And we're working to keep the kids as, our goal is to keep them as, across the whole campus, the age group separated as much as possible. So you know, when we have chapel, we're in the NPR together. So we will either have chapel via Zoom into the classroom separated, or if we're allowed to come on campus, I, it's my desire, that's a large place, we're going to have half as many students in each classroom. I would like to have one class on one side, one class on the other, separated out socially distanced, and then we'll zoom the rest of us into the other classes. And then the next week, so they get a live experience. And then the next week, and two other classes get that opportunity. And there's enough space on each side that with 10, 12 students on each side will be spread out. Now, worshiping to the Lord and singing out praises is biblical, and I would love for us to be able to do that. So Mr. Schmider, I'm going to take your, whatever you say on that, masks, we'll probably be singing with masks on, so that we are as safe as possible, because that's a high priority, too.
Yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll have to come up with very, very specific rules on that. We don't want to, you know, put God in a box, but we, again, we want to make sure that we do adhere to the guidelines, and also, again, just prioritize safety. So whether it's face shields, I mean, it really just depends where it's located and at what time. But yeah, we're, we're going to be looking at that.
Wonderful. Um, Mrs. Pax, what about high school?
Yes. So for chapel for high school, when we're on campus, if we're all there, we won't be able to meet in the church, because I don't think it's still going to be big enough for us. So we're looking at possibly having either a live chapel fed into the Bible classes, or a recording of a chapel that can be played during, during Bible classes. We're also looking at when we are allowed to be back on campus, to have a time when students have an option of coming to a live chapel after school. So we'll have some times when we will have perhaps a guest speaker or somebody speaking, and students will be able to come on campus and participate in the chapel.
Oh, tell about the new Right Now Media, the new.
Yes. Yes. So we're very excited about that. So it's called Right Now Media. It's all biblical, biblical videos and teachings. It's very much like Netflix, so you can choose different categories, you can choose different speakers. And if, you know, if we wanted to do a chapel on apologetics, there's multiple videos that we can play, and there are very well-known speakers. And so teachers will have a plethora of material to choose from, from any topic and any age group that they want during, with this program. So we're very excited about starting that.
So excited about that. There's 26,000 videos that are so well shot. Cinematography is really well done. It's just going to be amazing. So we're excited to purchase that. We're really excited to share that with your child and your family.
Yes, I was going to say, it's not only just for the students, but parents will have access as well. So, you know, we're very, very good program. Yes, I was going to say it's not only just for the students, but parents will have access as well. So, yeah, we're very, very good program.
John Maxwell's books is there. Uh, this is Christian books, Christian videos, teachings, Bible studies. It's just, it's really exciting. We're, we're proud and happy about that. Okay, um, fees. Now we get on to fees. If the classes are given over Zoom, is the school facility fee the same as for traditional five-day school? And tuition, is it the same?
Yeah, I mean, and uh, the reality is that given our, given the situation with COVID, I mean, we've invested a lot of money to make sure that we are able to offer the same level of excellence that we have been giving. That comes to safety, um, that comes to the technology piece. So that way, for those students who do opt to be at home, um, while we're on campus, it is, um, you know, it is the best possible equipment that that there is. Like I said, you know, we, it is, the fees will be staying the same, but again, it's, our, our costs have gone up considerably, but we're investing in terms of safety. Yeah.
Okay, intuition, did you mention that?
Yeah, it's it's same.
Perfect. Okay, and um, final question, no, two questions left. Can you explain the difference between SCS online versus online Zoom classes five days a week? And we're going to let, I'm going to let our director of marketing answer this question. We have worked um so diligently, I've been part of the online team as well, to launch our online school and which was ready for summer camp, our summer fuel program. And then it will be starting its first year of academics as well. And so Carla, go ahead and introduce this program to us. Our director of marketing, Carla Kelman, some of you high school may know her as as art teacher. As well, she's the parent of two middle schoolers, right? So go ahead, Carla.
Thank you very much, Holly. Time flies. So yes, I'm Carla Kelman. And for those of you in the high school who remembered me, I was called Mrs. K and I taught art at the high school level. A couple of years ago, I transitioned into this new position. And with all of the things that are happening right now, we have some amazing news, amazing things happening at Southlands. Uh, you always look at opportunities, not pandemics, but opportunities as an avenue to grow and expand yourself. So this year, we launched our Southland Christian Schools online. So if you know of any families that are into homeschooling or they want independent studies for their students, that's our school that's available online. Uh, we have a wonderful principal over at Lauren Kenzieo. She's also a transition from being a teacher in the classroom here and a vice principal in high school. So that's what Southland Christian School Online is. It's a fully developed online platform. It's a K through twelve accredited school. And so when you use the term online, that is online education. That is what Southland Christian Schools online education is all about. It varies and it differs from what we are doing right now, distant learning and Zoom. One more thing I wanted to say, you have to think of Southland Christian School Online as a global classroom. Anybody can take it from anywhere in the world, really, and across America. It's not limited by where you are, uh, by your geographic location, uh, and it is based upon your own schedule. So I know we have a lot of families who are into club sports and they have to maneuver school schedule. Well, this gives them flexibility to do independent study and as well as for those who want to do homeschooling uh with their own family. The Zoom that we're entering, that we went, moved into last spring, we would like to continue to refer to it as distant learning or remote learning. Because it is, when you use the term online, many people get a little confused, which online are we talking about? We know it's all virtual, but the Zoom distant learning or remote learning is what Southland Christian School is doing as an option to to complement our on-campus or onsite classes. So those are the things that you are currently enrolled student at Southland Christian School and you have the option because of the pandemic to be able to take classes from your own home. That is considered remote learning or distant learning. So again, you can reach out to any one of us. You can reach out to Lauren Kenzieo at any time if you want any more information about Southland Christian Schools online. And if you know families that are too far away from Southlands and they are interested, let us know.
Thanks. Thank you, Carla. Very good. Um, last and final question. We are just like right on the dot at five o'clock right now. So good job, everyone. Will orientation be via Zoom as well?
Uh, so when we're looking at orientation, um, you know, it's going to be in different pieces. So we are kind of, we are going to basically kind of have a mixed option. So we're looking at having an option to have parents come on campus, meet the teacher, kind of meet the teacher that way, hear about the classroom in person. Um, and then also the teachers, you know, possibly having a video for those who who may not feel comfortable. Um, so kind of having, giving that option to the to the families um in a safe manner. Yeah.
And more, more details will follow.
Yeah, that, yeah, yeah, that will, that will come in the near future.
Good. Okay, so everyone, that's the end of our presentation tonight. Um, this has been recorded. All of our Zoom sessions are recorded. They're all super safe. And, you know, no intruders coming in for all the classes that we've had. We have a great IT team. I just want to give a shout out to them. They have worked so, so hard since January, February, getting this ready to go. And um, so we, if you see them around on campus, give them a, not a high five, not a pat on the back, but give them a shout out. How's that? And uh, do we just appreciate all that they do? Um, so it's been recorded. We're going to send out the recording again to you. Um, so if you um missed it or you want to hear it again, you have a friend that wasn't able to attend, you'll, you'll know that that has been sent out. If you have extra questions from tonight, like gee, they didn't talk about this. We can't imagine what topic that might be because we've covered as much as we can, you know, pull together. But if there's something that we've missed, email it to us. We're here to make sure that you're comfortable, that every question you have is answered. We want you to know that we're doing the best that we possibly can to make your child safe and their learning environment be be optimized and up to Southland's excellence. But if we've missed something and you've thought of it, send it to us and we will address it for sure. And we'll get right to work on that. Um, I think Mr. Duncan has a few closing words and that's it.
I'll just say one. I've got many, but just for the sake of time, I'll just list one. You know, the word of God says faith without works is dead. And show me a man who says he has faith, well, I'll look at his works. You know, we have done all we know how to do. And we are monitoring things to the very minute of things happening. So we're not just saying, oh, God, God's going to do this, God's going to do that. He is going to do great things. But we're going to work as if it all depended on us and we're going to trust that if it all depends on Him. And let me just finish with this. We are not going to operate our school in fear. In the Christian's life, there's no room for fear. Perfect love casts out fear. We're not walking on pins and needles from some big monster. No, we are trusting God that His hand continues to be upon our school, on our staff, our parents, his precious students. We are trusting Him and we're doing all we can do in the natural. It's said, when you pray, God works. When I work, I work. When I pray, God works. So we've got a bunch of movers and shakers on staff and we know how to work and we're diligent. We will not operate in fear. We're going to operate in peace because kids, especially the younger, younger they are, they recognize fear and they're going to be constricted. This is not going to be right. We're going to operate in peace. We're going to operate in faith. We're going to operate in excellence. We're going to pray hard and we're going to work hard and we're going to watch and we're going to stand and see the salvation of the Lord. Let's see what God is going to do. He's going to do some great things. So come with expectation. Whether you, when I say come, whether you're online or on campus, we've made it easy. We've given you lots of options. But trust and make sure the words coming out of our mouths, the words coming out of your mouth, the words coming into your home, make sure they're laced with the word of God, which is truth. You still might tremble a bit and say, God, help me with my anxiety. Help me with my fear. I don't want this, Lord. Be my peace. Jesus, you're the prince of peace. So I just bless everybody tonight as you go. I bless you with peace, the prince of peace. Not as the world gives, do I give unto you, Jesus said, because the world can't give something they don't possess. But Jesus is the prince of peace. So I bless you with peace, health, strength and wisdom, and that you'd have much joy because the joy of the Lord is all of our strength. God bless each and every one of you.
Thank you, everyone. God bless you. God bless you. Bye-bye.